Alrighty, well, welcome. Let's go ahead and do our roll call. Give me one sec here. Alright, let's start voting.
All councilors present with Councilor Daniel previously requesting to be excused, and Mayor Coleman on the Zoom conference video.
Thank you. Alright, so now for agenda approval, do we have any changes? Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Ms. Daniel from the meeting and allowing Mayor Coleman to zoom in for this meeting.
Alright, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, citizen comment, is there any cards for citizen comment? Alright, Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Please consider the following when preparing your three-minute speech, and so I think you've read everything on there. So I have Dwayne, is it Dr. Wayne Sim Sparks?
No, Dwayne.
Dwayne, okay, so I was right the first time. If you would like to come up here, we'd appreciate that. When we do the citizen comment, you are in a three-minute timeframe, and so what will happen is the clock is going. When it goes off, as Mayor Coleman always will say, is we will kindly ask you to wrap everything up, but we look forward to your comment. Whenever you're ready.
I would like to begin by saying good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Dwayne Sparks, and I am with the World Misses Society Church of God, and thank you for having us again. Since our last meeting, we conducted the Cole Park Rio Grande River cleanup and collected over 50 bags of trash successfully. Now, we like to invite you to participate with us in our international We Love You Foundation in Denver to our worldwide blood drive. Recently, the World Misses Society Church of God has been facing false accusations related to sex trafficking. We feel saddened that these false accusations are taking away from the true issue of sex trafficking while defaming the church as well. From this situation, our members now face issues when expressing their faith. The Church of God's mission is to spread the love of Heavenly Mother by preaching the Word of God and being involved in the community service throughout the whole world, which we also hope to share with the community of Alamosa and the San Luis Valley. So let me give you a little bit about the International We Love You Foundation. The International We Love You Foundation carries out global charitable activities so that our neighbors across the world in difficulties due to disasters, diseases, poverty, and so on may live in peace, being respected without discrimination beyond nationality, race, language, and culture. The We Love You Foundation started in Korea in the 1990s. Since its official launch in 2001, more than 155,000 members in 105 regions and 51 countries have been making multi-dimensional efforts to improve the well-being of the socially unprivileged, such as children, women, senior citizens, and the disabled, disaster victims, refugees, and the poor, to create communication and harmony in communities. As an international non-governmental organization associated with the United Nations Department of Global Communications, the International We Love You Foundation helps achieve the 17 UN Sustainable Developmental Goals, the biggest common goal of the global society, and establishes global networks and partnerships with governments, municipalities, and institutions across the national boundaries for our sustainable well-being of the world. In closing, we would like to invite you to participate in the upcoming blood drive, and we would also like to meet with you to discuss future partnership between the city and the International We Love You Foundation.
Thank you very much. Awesome, thank you. So the blood drive is actually in Denver.
Yes, it's in Denver.
Awesome.
It'll be on the 28th of this month.
At 1:00 PM.
Yes, at 1:00 PM.
Alrighty. Thank you very much, and I do want to thank you for the cleanup that you've done, and it does seem like you're doing a lot for our community, so I just want you to know, I know us on council, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
Yes. Staff, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
No, we're good.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Okey-dokey. So from there, we have consent calendar.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A as presented.
Alright, ready to vote?
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, we're going to go on to regular business, and the first thing we have is Public Works Resolution Number 122019, substantial completeness of petition to annex Comfort Inn.
Mayor, this resolution is pretty much a housekeeping kind of resolution. This is the first stage, or first stage anyway, before council in an annexation process. The owners of the Comfort Inn filed a petition for annexation of the Comfort Inn property about six months ago, it was in November of 2018, and then asked us to put that on hold when a question came up because they're only wanting to annex a portion of their parcel. And the question was, can you do that? And they decided to be safe about it, they would subdivide that parcel before they annexed the portion that they wanted to annex into the city. They have now done that, it's the same land that's the subject of the application. Staff has reviewed the application, and it's staff's conclusion that the application checks all the boxes that it needs to check for being complete under the annexation statute. So all this resolution does is finds that, yes, the application and the accompanying plat cover all the bases that need to be covered, it can now move forward for further consideration. So that's all that's before you tonight is, does the application cover the items that it needs to cover? Just as background, the next steps will be, this resolution finding substantial compliance also sets a date for a public hearing on whether the property is eligible to be annexed, and that's the 1/6th contiguity and the community of interest standards. So that will be at your August 21st meeting. And then there will also be consideration of an annexation ordinance and an annexation agreement that will detail what the responsibilities of the developer are with respect to annexation. So there's really no discretion on this, it either meets the standards or it doesn't. Your exercise of discretion as to whether or not to do the annexation comes in those later stages.
Thank you, is there any questions? Counselor Griego?
With that, Mayor, I will make a motion to pass Resolution Number 122019.
I'll second that.
Alrighty, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to Parks and Recreation, the authorization to accept the lowest bid, $450,578 for construction of the Montana Azul Park. And it looks like we've got Andy Rice coming up here.
So thank you, Mayor Protem. As you know, this has been a very aggressive project and something that's been in the works for quite a while. When we completed the update to the comprehensive plan, one of the items that it focused on is what is our infrastructure related to parks, open space, and trails? And when you calculate the number of land we have dedicated to parks, it meets the threshold that most communities would need. But when we looked at the map of our community and where our parks are located, we realized that there is a portion in southwest Alamosa that does not have the same access to parks. And so that became a bit of a priority from an equity perspective for staff and city council. We had a Public Works Director travel to some different states and come up with a different idea of utilizing some of our stormwater facilities also as a park. And we started down that path, and we were very, very successful with a GOCO grant and a Colorado Health Foundation grant, as well as significant public support both from the neighborhood and from the public in general. As we continue to work on this project and the design and engineering of it, we realized that the groundwater and the clay and the type of soil that we have is not the same that allows other communities to utilize this dual purpose. And so that's when we came back to council to indicate that we would probably need to look at doing a lift station that would not only help still move that water out, so it would still collect and be used in that area, but it would move it out. But that lift station would also be used for more when the regional development occurs in that area as well. With council's approval of that, we moved forward and worked very closely with Reynolds Engineering and our local contractors on what we thought those costs would be. It's not something we entered into lightly. We did go out to bid, and unfortunately, the lowest bid from Robbins Construction of $513,000 would have us exceeding what the total project budget would be for this park. And so what we did with Robbins, thankfully, is a very positive partnership, is we looked at how we could value engineer that and get some of those costs down, such as from a timing perspective, are there other areas we could reduce some of the materials that are needed? City staff looked at reducing some landscaping slightly and certain changes in signs and those types of things. So we were able to get it down lower, and the recommendation to you tonight is to authorize us to accept the low bid, which is now at $453,000. And just from a total project cost, it is $814,480, of which $441,394 is funded by grants, and $80,000 is provided by staff and kind. So, yes, these are still large numbers, but there's large numbers of grants that are coming in to offset some of these projects' costs. So the item before council tonight, we feel is probably one of the last steps before we can get all the pieces in place and start work probably later this fall on the park if approved tonight. We did put the number into the 10-year projection for the Parks and Recreation, and we stay above the 8%, we start getting closer clearly, but we are still above that 8% contingency line that we need to stay above. And so, Andy, did you have anything to add?
No.
Counselor Carson?
Well, I was gonna say, if nobody had questions.
I had a couple comments, I think, because it's in my area.
Yeah, Counselor Griego?
First, you did say we have the $150,000 that we have to make up from community rec funds balance.
So yes, it would come from community rec, some of it's through savings, some of it is through the sales tax performing a little bit better, and then some of it gets us closer to that 8% line.
Another thing, just to comment, is that area is really growing out there, and it's basically families, and we don't have any parks out there. I think the closest park is what?
Probably the school or Hardin. It's not easy to walk to or even bicycle to.
So I appreciate the city looking at that, and like I said, these are all family housing out there, it's not single, so this will be a positive, positive thing for that whole area. And we will continue to grow because of those two schools out there. It'll continue to, the whole area will continue to grow, so I think the city's done it going the right direction. Thank you.
I'd like to just add how awesome it is that we got so much grant money for this. I mean, that's a large, large amount, and so thanks to staff. Looks like we're pointing over to your direction.
Midas touch over there.
There you go, well, thank you so much for doing that, because that actually makes it so this is realistic and something we can do, where if it was much higher, it would probably have been more of a challenge, so thank you very much.
Well, every grant's a team effort, but thank you, I appreciate it.
And Mayor Coleman, I think, wanted to say something.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes, I too would like to thank the staff for being very resourceful with finding the revenue to create this park area for the people in their community. They've been asking for it for a while, and it feels really good to know that they'll be able to have a place for their kids to go out and enjoy some of the outdoor activities, which a lot of our citizens have said they really want throughout the community, so thank you so very much.
Thanks, Mayor Coleman.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize staff to accept the bid from Robbins Construction for the construction of Montana Azul Park.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Alright. Go ahead and start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alrighty.
Thank you, Charlie.
We're going to move on then to City Clerk Municipal Court, and this is the first reading ordinance Number 172019, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County for conduct of the November 5, 2019 coordinated election.
Okay, so this is the IGA for the election this year. We've coordinated our elections since 1993 when they first became available to us. The IGA for this election is the same as we've had in past elections, and it specifies the responsibilities for each party conducting the election. If you have questions, the IGA is attached. We budgeted $15,000 this year for it, and I think it's estimated about $10,000.
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve on first reading and set up for a public hearing on Wednesday, August 7, 2019 at 7:00 PM, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County to conduct the November 5, 2019 coordinated election.
Alright, do you have your first and second, you're good? Okay, we'll start voting.
He said yes.
So Counselor Vehill, you want to add that? So they're asking you to do it? Oh, sorry, I misunderstood.
I think he did, I thought he called it number 18 or whatever it was.
We were commenting that the mayor put his yes sign up, is what we were commenting on.
I apologize, I misunderstood.
Ordinance 17.
So the motion carried unanimously.
Making sure we're all on our toes here. Alright, next, City Manager Legal is Resolution Number 132019, a resolution setting forth streets to be addressed in the event the dedicated street sales tax is approved by the voters in the November 2019 general election, and a schedule for addressing such streets.
So I will go ahead and handle this one, but then you may want to circle back around for the second reading and public hearing for the one before. But this is an exciting one, so let's do this one. The resolution is part of the discussions that councils had in regards to realizing from a community perspective that there's a certain expectation for the amount of streets that people want to see get worked on, a certain condition on those streets, but when we look at our revenue, it's not going to match being able to meet those expectations. And so we started down this path of what does that look like? And what we're looking at doing clearly is putting together something before voters in November for a dedicated street tax, a half-cent sales tax that would sunset. And as part of that, we wanted to be as transparent and committed to what the public needed to know in order to make this decision. And that involved creating a citizen's street committee that would take a look at the streets, they would look at maybe some priorities and those types of things. Two from each ward were appointed, two at large, and then two representatives from either businesses, major employers, ACID, or the Chamber. And that group took about three months, give or take, and honestly, really rolled up their sleeves and hit the ground and put a lot of work into driving the streets, taking a look at them, having honest discussions in regards to priorities, and realizing really there's not enough money to go around, and so how do you prioritize that? And we were very lucky with those representatives that council appointed, and they worked well together. That group presented their work to council in June, and then city council met again on June 26 to further take a look at what those recommendations were, or actually July 11, I'm sorry, met July 11 to discuss those recommendations. You guys made some minor changes to the timing of some of those streets and those types of things, but in all, it's very consistent with some of the goals that the Citizen Street Committee put forward. And so what we did following that July 11 meeting is draft the resolution, and there's some critical parts, I'm going to open the resolution. One, I was very thankful that the city attorney in there complimented the Citizen Street Advisory Committee on their work, because they really did work very hard on this, and so I was really glad to see the deep appreciation for the committee's job well done. And then also in this resolution is the commitment that we've talked about, that we're not going to have a shell game, that if voters do approve the sales tax, we will continue to contribute $500,000 annually from the general fund. So that is included in this resolution. The other thing that we have wording in there that I feel is important is our commitment to always be looking for grants, or ways to partner, or ways to try to reduce those costs. And so if we can reduce those costs, then we wanted to make sure we had a list that we knew how we were going to move through those and be able to make some adjustments. Also, there may be times that there's a grant that's available for a certain type of street because of its location near, like a school or something, that may make a slight adjustment in the timing, so we wanted to make sure we were transparent with that. But the other part of the resolution I feel was a great compromise that came out of council at your work session, which is, we don't want to get to where we're promising each year, because if one thing goes wrong, then we're breaking the promise. But at the same time, how can we communicate to residents when they can expect that street to be done, and trying to find that middle ground? And so what we did is we essentially broke it into three chunks, and so we had those streets that we anticipate being done between 2020 and 2023, the next chunk is the 2024 through 2027, and then lastly, it's the years 2028 through 2030. Then the last section that we have is just identifying that if we get grants, if we get great bids, and we're able to move through those streets, here's a listing of some of the other projects, then that would be priorities. We also included language there that if for some reason we completed all the streets that were listed, and say we have $100,000 left, well, as you know from looking at those numbers, $100,000 doesn't get us a block on any of these streets. And so we put in there that if for some reason all that's left is less than 400, then that may be those overlay streets, or the sidewalk, or those types of things, because we didn't, again, want to make a promise that would not be reasonable to follow through on. And so that's essentially what the resolution is before you, and then I'll put up a map that we created.
Can I make a comment before you go to the map?
Yes, sir.
That was one of my biggest concerns, is the timeline, you know, and I appreciate that you did. So it'll stay within those three years, each, that bracket of streets, to complete those, right?
We have every intention, but again, if there's something that it's a safe routes to school, and say we can't get it for this year, but if we wait one more year, we might get it, or vice versa, but it would only be for those types of considerations. But otherwise, we plan to just work down that list.
And like I said, I appreciate that, because things can get out of hand, and I hope that we have that in black and white, that we will continue that way. I know we can't promise anybody anything, but at least there's a timeline there where we can attempt to try to do those streets, and I hope that we stick to that, so, thank you.
With that being said, I recommend that council adopt Resolution 13-2019, setting forth streets to be addressed in the event that the dedicated street tax is approved by the voters in 2019.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
There's discussion, real quick.
Oh, yes, please.
Just want to thank Heather, City Manager, because I think you alluded to it that night, Mr. Carson, that we all came in hell-bent on some streets, and it's got to be here, and move this here, and we want to see more work on this side of town, and I think Ms. Brooks did a great job of taking all of our ideas and coming to consensus, and I just really appreciated her, appreciate that. And I think that was the best, in my time, six years here, the best work session I've ever been to, so, thank you, Heather.
I agree, and I also would like to, again, thank the Streets Committee, because they definitely put their heart and soul in this, and put a lot of hours, and also really came in, they did their homework, and it was really about what they felt and saw, and so I think they did a fantastic job as well. So with that, we can continue voting. Mayor Coleman? Oh, sorry, I don't have eyes behind my head, sorry.
No problem, just one comment. I too would like to thank everybody who was involved for the team effort, it took all of us who participated to make that come about that way, and I'd just like everybody to know that we appreciate everything that you've done, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, continue voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, so I obviously did go out of order, because I was just so excited about those streets. So we will now go to the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance Number 162019, an ordinance amending sections 21-2-204, 21-2-205, and 21-4-702B2C of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to limit sexually-oriented businesses to the industrial zone and add State Avenue to the setback of such businesses from highway frontage, to change the distance requirements on head shops from 600 feet to 1,000 feet from other head shops, and to change the time limitations on placement of signs on vacant land.
Well, Mayor Protem, one of the advantages to publishing our ordinances by title is that we have to make sure the title gives an accurate summary of what's in the ordinance, and for an ordinance that has as many components as this one does, that's a useful exercise, because it's easy then for me to say, oh, this ordinance is just simply doing four things, and it's those four things in the title. Let me start off just reiterating the conclusion in the council communication, that this ordinance addresses numerous health, safety, and aesthetic concerns, especially related to the highway corridors through the city, and council should make a determination on its vision for the city with respect to these issues. So those are the four things that this So those are the four things that this ordinance does. As you will recall, there were a number of changes to the proposed ordinance as it came to you on first reading that you made after first reading, and I included a red line that shows the changes between the ordinance as originally presented on first reading and the ordinance as changed by you after first reading. So if if you want to look at that, you can. The alternatives listed in the council communication are not the only alternatives in this universe, but they're ones that I thought were were reasonable for your consideration. So I guess with that, unless you have questions, that's, we discussed this at some length on first reading, and then we do need to open it for public hearing for the massive members of the public.
So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to say there's nobody coming up to make any comments, so we'll close public hearing. Do we have any comments from council?
Question for Eric, does the sign, the time, the time limitations on placement of signs on vacant land, is there any way to pull that out? Or is it all part of the ordinance? It has to stay in the whole ordinance?
No, it does not have to stay. In fact, that was one of the options under alternative option four. Change the ordinance to eliminate the change to the timing restriction on temporary signs. So you could certainly pull that section out.
So is that something you're wanting? Okay.
If I may, Mayor.
Yep.
I kind of agree because when this ordinance first was put together back a year or so ago, that was one of the biggest debates was having to take those signs, put them up, and then take them down and then put them back up, you know? And I, if we can change that that section four, that would help out for a lot of candidates that are running and future candidates. So I'd like for for that change to happen.
So can you help me with this? Do we need a first and a second to vote to pull that out, or do we just say we want that pulled out?
Well, I mean, there's a number of ways you could proceed. It might, if that's an issue, it might make most sense for someone to propose, to move that the ordinance be approved minus that section. And I can, let me pull it up and tell you what section that is of the ordinance.
And while you're doing that, when it minuses it, then do we then vote on that section?
So then you would vote, if someone made that motion and it were seconded, then you would vote on that, and that would mean you would be voting to approve the ordinance without that change to the sign timing in it. And if that passed, then what you would have would be the ordinance minus section one, which deals with that timing change.
And then that means then we wouldn't discuss or vote on the sign thing at all then?
So they don't then treat it, they don't come back and talk about the sign, I think is what she's asking. So if they pull it out, does that mean they just then aren't having the signs in it? They don't want to change the signs?
That's right. If you pull that out, then you leave the signs the way they are currently. So that's my lawyer way of thinking about it. There's maybe an easier way to do this, which is if that's the only controversial issue, then why don't you guys vote on that issue about whether you want to pull the sign change out or leave it in? And then you can move on from that. I don't know whether there's other controversial issues. Some of the other alternatives that I mentioned that we didn't, one of them that we didn't discuss at first reading was when you at first reading decided you wanted to change the buffer for sexually oriented businesses, I'm, no, I'm sorry, for for head shops and paraphernalia businesses to 1,000 feet. Is that from other head shops, or is that from all type two businesses? And I assumed it was from other head shops, so that's the way I wrote it. I don't know whether that's an issue or not.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes, Eric and Heather, if you could just clarify, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this as well. If we remove the sign issue from the vacant land, then people can put signs up that are sexually oriented. Am I correct in saying that, if they remove that and don't put it to a vote?
That's correct. If you remove that change to the sign ordinance, you can put up any kind of sign for six months out of the year. What the change does is say you can only put up signs, and and you can, just to be clear, this this deals with removing the limitations on signs on vacant lots. So so there are limitations on signs on vacant lots that you can't have more than, I think it's three, it's either two or three. And this removes that limitation for this period of time so that you could have signed more than two or three signs on a vacant lot for six months out of the year.
So so I just, let me clarify this. This retitens it back up because, so, so, yeah, so doing this doesn't loosen that, it's tightening it back up instead of just the six months of more than three. It's within the May 1st to July 5th and September 1st to November 15th. And Mayor, the reason this came up during this time is as we were looking at sexually oriented businesses, someone pointed out how sexually oriented businesses could use this to do some, put some signs up and 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 that type of thing. Whether or not they do, we don't know, but we can't base it on content, we can only limit based on the timing.
So right now, signs can be up for six months from May 1 through November 15 or whatever it is. And the proposed change in this ordinance is to break that six months up into frankly the primary season and the general election season, so May through June or July, and then September through November.
All right, Counselor Grealish, and Counselor Broyles. Oh.
Getting back to the meeting, are we out of, are we out of the, the hearing?
Yes.
Counselor hands, they closed the hearing.
I did. I opened it and no Caspers came up.
Go ahead and let David say his piece. I was going to make a motion that we, that we take that section.
I was going to ask Counselor Grealish, who would this affect that you're thinking about?
It's just the candidate, the candidate goes out there and he goes and asks Mr. Vacant Line Land Owner, can I put a sign up? And he says, yeah. Okay, he goes down, he puts a sign, then you go back and you take it down, you have to take it down for another period of time. And then you go back and put it right back up, and that's if he lets you put it back up. It's it's just, it's something that we've dealt with this, and it comes up every election, something comes up to the fact that we, you know, that we're taking signs up and down. There's never been one election where this debate has not come up. I just say, you know, just leave it the way it is, you know? And let's work with with the candidates that are trying to at least attempt to run for the positions, you know?
Any other comments? Mayor Coleman?
Yeah, I just have a brief comment, just in case you decide to put that to the vote. I understand where Counselor Grealish is coming from with the political side, but my concern is the greater aesthetics of the city. If for some reason a sexually oriented business were to put up a sign, this is the only recourse we'll have to break up the time of having something like that seen by not only our residents, but people who travel throughout our city. So that's my main concern is not for political reasons whatsoever, but for the potential threat of aesthetically affecting our community with sexual oriented type of businesses.
Thank you, and I do echo your comments is I sort of see it the same way, is it may discourage some people putting up signs because if it was, they have to put them up, take them down, put them up again, in regards to that same nature.
Well, if I may, I'll I'll try a motion here to see if it works or not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we pass, ordinance number 16-2019, removing section one. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, that's what you want.
Okay, second.
Okay. All right, we can start voting. So this one we're voting for is, I guess it's clear, do I need to restate it or are we?
I believe it's clear.
Okay.
The mayor's getting ready to hold up his sign.
But we can't read it yet. Does it say no?
My my sign says no.
Looks like Counselor Carson abstained.
Can you abst, I don't think you can, can you?
You have a policy that wouldn't let you abstain unless you've got a conflict.
All right, we're rerunning the vote.
The the motion failed four to two.
All right, so.
Okay, then Mayor Protam, I move that we pass on second reading ordinance number 16-2019.
I'll second.
All right, we'll try voting.
Yes.
The motion carried five to one with Counselor Grealish casting the no vote.
All righty, so we're going to move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor Broyles.
I didn't turn off, so.
So you don't have one?
No, I don't have one.
Okay. Is there anybody else? All righty, we're just going to keep going on here, staff announcements.
Thank you. I just want to do a little bit of some reminders of upcoming meetings and events. So next week, July 24, we do have our City Services Fair. It's at Peyton's Play Ball Park out by the rec center, and that starts at 5:30. So thank you to all the staff who are handling that and and getting that ready to be put on. We also have a work session that is scheduled for July 31, and that was to review the Street Trust Fund presentation strategy and and all of that. We are also moving the draft ballot language to that work session as well. It's better timing for us to get that language to the Department of Revenue, and it seems to fit that night anyways. So that way you can get a preview of what that draft ballot language is and offer some input at that point in time as well. And then August 1, we have the employee barbecue at the multi-use pavilion at 5:30. And I think Kelly has sent an email that if you're willing to maybe volunteer, please let her know, but it should be exciting. I enjoy getting to interact with all employees and their families. It's a very nice informal atmosphere, and so looking forward to that. We also have SLV Beat the Heat BBQ August 2 through the 3. And here comes some of the interesting stuff. August 5 is our council candidate orientation session. And so we've got three positions that are up, and so it will be interesting to see who shows up that night. I also wanted to share with council that this week Judy and I and the department heads are beginning our budget meetings, and so that's when we start sitting down, going line item by line item and CIP as well, with Greg incorporating that. And so our heads are spinning probably for the next few days with some numbers. We also have next week, Tuesday night, the downtown plan, we're having a public outreach. This is probably going to be the last big one, so we're really trying to promote it. They're going to be presenting some of the draft concepts and recommendations out of that. So from a public perspective, this would be a really important meeting to attend. It will be here at City Hall in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, and we will have babysitting and Spanish interpreters available as well. And then finally, our police department is coordinating National Night Out at Cole Park, which is Tuesday, August 6, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And so that's another opportunity for the community to come out and interact and get to know our officers and just create that civic pride. So a lot coming up the next few weeks, a lot of activities. Anything else from a staff perspective?
All righty. I think then we'll move on to local liquor license and authority action, so this is Consent Calendar B. So this is Alamosa County Chamber of Commerce Beat the Heat BBQ Special Events Permit for August 2 and August 3 of 2019.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
I'll second that.
All right, let's vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, we're moving on to council comments. Counselor Vehel.
Thank you. Question for you, Heather, is, when is our retreat? September or August?
It is September. We were originally looking at an August date, but we could not get everybody. So it is in September, and I had closed, oh, it's the 27th and 28th.
Thank you, Heather.
Uh huh.
Counselor Grealish.
We were going to do a walk through the trail, the Mal, Mal, how do you say Mal?
The Malm Trail.
Malm. That was rescheduled for when?
I haven't rescheduled it yet, I still need to look at the calendar. I wanted to kind of get a better feel too on how quickly we thought the sub water would go down. But it's still, it will happen, I just need to look at the calendars.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a couple things. So first of all, with all the things that we have going on on August 5, we do also have our third annual economic summit, which we have a lot of great speakers. It should be a great event, and it's at Adam State, pretty much for the full day, starts around 8 and ends around 3. And then the other thing I'd like to thank Holly, Heather, anybody else who put in hard work, all my colleagues here at city council, we had a very successful CML Executive Board Retreat. They came in last Thursday, we had a get together at Ruby Slipper, then Friday, we had our actual retreat at Vista's at Adam State. We then went to Nino's and had a great get together. We had a lot of leaders from other towns in the San Luis Valley come as well. And then on Saturday, we did a historical tour of Alamosa, and then we went out to the sand dunes, and it was a great trip there as well. Everybody on the board truly had a fantastic time, so I think we did a great job showcasing Alamosa, and on top of it, had a great CML Retreat as well. So just wanted to thank everybody. All right, Counselor Carson?
I just wanted to tell the staff thank you for the good work on the audit and reiterate some comments that I've got lately in, from constituents and echo some feelings that I have, and that is that we do have a great city staff, and we do have a great city council here, so I hope everyone appreciates it, and I want to wish us luck through this, through this new streets fund venture we're going on. We all have different opinions, and we come into things quite differently, and we seem to come through shining, and we, I really appreciate that of everyone and staff especially. Again, everybody's great, I've gotten great comments on PD in our neighborhood lately, and so I just wanted to echo that from the people in our neighborhoods. Thank you, guys.
That is great, thank you very much. All right, and it looks like Mayor Coleman has something to say as well.
Sure. I just want to thank everyone for allowing me this opportunity to attend this media meeting utilizing Zoom, and I would like to thank the IT team and Holly who came together earlier to make sure that everything worked properly with Jim Brennan and Holly. Thank you. And thank you, counsel, for everything that you all do and staff as well.
All righty, anything else? All right, with that, we're going to end up moving into executive sessions. We actually have quite a few. We have executive session, do I need to read them all?
Well, I think you should, you don't need to read every- Well, um, I think you should, you don't need to read every word there that's on the agenda, but indicate what the four executive sessions are for.
Okay, so we're going to have our four executive sessions. And the first one is to discuss the acquisition of the property for Victoria Lift Station stormwater drainage purposes. The second one is to discuss transfer of real property in conjunction with the SLV animal shelter. And then the third and fourth are personal matters. One, the evaluation of the municipal judge and the other is the evaluation of the city attorney. Uh, so there, that's it.
Mayor, I move that we, we go into executive session to discuss the acquisition of property for Victoria Lift Station, to discuss transfer of real property in conjunction with the SLV animal shelter and develop negotiation strategies, uh, to evaluate the municipal judge and to evaluate the city attorney.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right, let's start voting.
And then we wanted to make it clear for the record that Mayor Coleman would not be joining us in the executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
And so with that, uh, just to make it clear is we will not have any further business after the executive sessions, um, have concluded. All right, should we take a?